Once again, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Village of Bartlett Committee of the Whole Meeting for June 4, 2024. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to again, please call the roll.
Trustee Danny?
Here.
Gansey?
Here.
Gunstein?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Laporte?
Here.
Swansky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. If there's anyone that would like to address the committee at this time, kindly step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and try to keep your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone in the room that would like to address the committee of the whole? Seeing none, John, is there anyone online that would like to address the committee?
No, Mayor, we do not.
Thank you, John. That being said, we'll move on to standing committee reports. Building and zoning committee chairman Gunstein.
Thank you, President Wallace. We have two items tonight. The first item is BP Station at 1100 West Sterns Road. The petitioner is requesting a special use permit to sell packaged beer, wine, and liquors at the BP gas station located at 1100 West Sterns Road in the B2 Neighborhood Shopping District. The staff requests forwarding the application to the Plan Commission for review and conduct a public hearing. I believe this is just to sell alcohol in their coolers. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. If anybody doesn't have any questions, we can send this off to Plan Commission. All right. The next one is basically the same thing. BP Station 5590 County Farm Road. Same petition. Petitioners request a special use permit to sell packaged liquor, wine at the BP Station located at 5590 County Farm Road in the B3 Neighborhood Shopping Zoning District. The staff request forwarding this application to the Planning and Zoning Commission for review to conduct a public hearing. If nobody has any questions, we will send this off to the P&amp;Z, and they will get it.
Let it go.
Hand it to them.
There you go. With that, we have nothing more to report.
They could have the meeting this evening. They're all here.
We got a quarrel. With that, we have nothing else to report.
Thank you, Chairman Gunstein. License and ordinance committee chairman Hopkins.
Thank you, President Wallace. We have one item on our agenda, and that's the ordinance amending the Bartlett Municipal Code regarding noise limitations. Attached is an ordinance amending the Bartlett Municipal Code regarding noise limitations. The police department is requesting an amendment to the two sections of the village code that pertain to noise limitations. Section 434, excessive noise. Section 3-22-2, amplified regulations. Section 43-4 has not been modified since 2001. Section 3-22-2 since 2017. In 2023, the Village of Bartlett Police Department responded to 284 noise complaints throughout the village. Many of these complaints occurred in residential areas, specifically 92 complaints were received from residents of the Bartlett Lake apartment complex. Section 4-3-4 of the village code, excessive noise, currently states no person shall cause or allow sound beyond the boundaries of said person's property located within an industrial business or public land area that unreasonably interferes with the enjoyment or life with any lawful business and/or activity. I won't read anymore because it's pretty redundant. With that, I will turn it over to Rob Sweeney, the deputy chief, with any other comments or concerns.
I've been here providing over your answer questions based on the questions you guys had from the May Committee of the Whole Meeting. So following that meeting, we did additional research into different questions that were asked. One of the questions that was asked was what type of complaints were we responding to for noise violations? And out of those 284 complaints, 190 were amplifier regulations violations, which would be loud parties, loud noise complaints in residential areas. And of those 190 complaints, we found that over 70% of those complaints occurred between the hours of 2200 and 0800 hours in the mornings. Between 10:00 PM and 8:00 AM.
Come on, Sergeant.
We all.
Come on, Sergeant Gansey. You don't know.
I saw his nodding.
I know. I know militaries.
We all knew that.
So over 70% of those occurred between 10:00 PM and 8:00 AM. So what we're doing is we're seeking an ordinance amendment which would allow us to enforcement action sure should a violator not abate the noise. So I want to be clear about that is our full intent is to allow any violations or complaints to be abated prior to any enforcement action being taken. So since that meeting, we also conducted noise level testing of our own. And what we did is we set up a vehicle with radio music playing with the windows down, and we went at various distances that we've seen other towns use as their limitations. And what we found is what we considered a normal level of volume, which was level 15 inside a car radio, that that music could be heard barely at 50 feet. And anything outside of 50 feet, it couldn't be heard at all. And then we raised it to a level that we considered the top end of reasonable, which was still loud to me. But to the group consensus, they said 22 would be the high end of reasonable. And we could hear that at 100 feet, but by the time we made it out to 150 feet, that was also no longer able to be heard. So in addition to that, we, thanks to Kurt, did a survey of all the surrounding jurisdictions. And what we found is that all of the jurisdictions had ordinances for the residential areas, noise ordinances for the residential areas. And those towns varied in time and distance. They varied anywhere from 11, sorry, 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM. And then they varied in distances from 50 feet to 150 feet for restricted distances. So based on those factors and discussions with the village manager and the chief of police, what we'd like to do is present what we felt was a fair ordinance proposal and then get feedback from the board. So what we're proposing is noise heard up to 150 feet away would be considered reasonable between the hours of 08 and 10:00 PM. Any noise that could be heard over 150 feet away would require an amplifier permit from the village. Noise heard up to 75 feet away would be considerable between the hours of 2200 and 08. Anything that could be heard.
Regular times.
Sorry. 10:00 PM and 8:00 AM. I wish I would have wrote it like that on my paper. Anything that could be heard beyond 75 feet would be considered unreasonable during those times. And then additional to that, trustee Hopkins spoke about the unreasonableness. So time is just one factor that police officers would consider when determining if a noise was unreasonable. Some other factors would be the proximity of the noise to sleeping facilities, the duration of the noise, whether the noise was recurrent, intermittent, or constant, and then lastly, the necessity of the noise. If the officer allowed the violator to abate and they chose not to, another question that the board had last time is what type of enforcement actions could be taken. So we revised the order in our proposal, and it would be heard either through local ordinance or local adjudication, and that would be based on the severity of the violation and the amount of occurrences. If it was someone that had been cited many times under a local adjudication, they then could be cited under local ordinance to raise the severity. Also, if it was a first-time violator and they were charged under a local adjudication, they would be allowed to pay by mail fine in lieu of an in-person appearance. And the last part was, you asked about a tiered fine schedule. We found that it wouldn't be really necessary to put a fine structure in like that. But what it is, is our ordinance allows a fine structure anywhere beginning at $75 all the way up to $750. So we could tier our system all the way up to $750 based on the amount of violations that had previously occurred. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
So what you just stated, is that the current ordinance that is on our?
No. What's in your packet is the original draft ordinance.
50 feet was our original ordinance.
That was what was on the books prior to this as well.
Yeah, we definitely, I mean, I want to make sure, I've had several residents reach out to us, and I want to give our residents an opportunity to actually see it on paper before we vote on it. And I don't want them to vote, see it, and then we vote on it on the next meeting. So I thank you for making those changes, but I definitely think we need to have it on paper, unfortunately have another committee meeting, and then we can forward it onto the village board. This is my opinion on the matter. Does anyone else have any comments or concerns?
How many decibels would that be? Can you relate it to that? Because normal conversation is what, 60, 65, 70 decibels? Can you relate some of this to?
The decibels is using the environmental code.
Right.
Something that's mostly for enforcing of businesses. So what that would be is if we received a complaint from a business, we would actually have to go locate a decimal meter. I don't know what the actual decibels would equate to on that.
Gotcha.
Thank you, Dan.
Yeah, in regard to that, as Rob mentioned, we would not be, we would be against that. Reason being is it's just too difficult for, you know, having the monitoring devices, trained in monitoring devices. And then it's just much easier what all the other towns are doing that Kurt showed in regard to Hanover Park, Carroll Stream, Streamwood, Bloomingdale, Schaumburg, St. Charles, Roselle, Elgin, where they're using a feet instead of using the decimal meters.
I was just curious.
So I want to, are you done? I'm sorry.
I'm done, yeah.
The issue I have with the footage of the distance is, it's great in a neighborhood where there's a house behind it or next to it to deaden the sound. If I live on a golf course and I'm having a party and I turn it down, even if I turn it down to a respectable amount, the echo that is going to broadcast out through the golf course to the neighboring houses is still going to be louder than the ordinance would permit. And in my neighborhood, I have neighbors directly behind me about 150 feet, and we were sitting on our patio, and I could hear them in the pool 11 o'clock at night. It didn't bother me. But what I wouldn't want is if I'm in my pool, somebody being bothered that my kids are, you know, playing basketball in the pool and being too loud, because I don't think that's what we're, that's what I don't want to have happen. I read some of these. We have trucks starting and warming up too early, kids running and screaming. I mean, a lot of them are loud music. But what we don't want is good neighbors being attacked by somebody that is not a good neighbor, or vice versa. Because to call in a neighbor for kids playing in the pool at 10 o'clock at night, I think it's kind of.
So no weaponizing the noise ordinance?
That is our absolute full intent.
I think amplified, amplified is different than conversation.
That is correct. And that's what I was just going to mention to you.
My voice is not amplified if I'm yelling at somebody. It's just my voice. But if I'm having an amplified device without a permit, I can understand that being a nuisance.
Yeah, that is the proposal, is it would be for amplified devices to have the 150 feet between the certain times and the 75 during the other times. That's based on what Elgin's ordinance is, and also based on our research when we're getting the most complaints from the loud parties or the loud music stuff like that. In regard to what you're mentioning, if it's just people being loud, that would fall under the excessive noise portion of the ordinance, which if you take a look at that, it kind of mentions, what's the term on it?
Unreasonable.
Unreasonableness.
There is no dedicated distance to excessive noise. We would look at all the factors which we talked about. What time is it? Is it 10:00 PM or is it 1:00 AM? If the police officers, is it near sleeping quarters? Is it, you know, constant? Has it been going on all day? And again, we would have those conversations with the people to let them know, hey, your neighbor's, your neighbor is calling, and they could either choose to just be a little bit quieter in the pool. But again, citation is an absolute last resort for something like this. We do not want to go out there and start citing a bunch of people for noise.
I understand. So Deer Park Circle is a big, you know, drain on our resources here. So do we, do we have like a three-strike policy for absolute noise violation? I mean, have we looked at that? Because I just don't want to utilize it as a weapon to what Kevin said, to, for one pissed-off neighbor revenging against another for something miniscule.
Specifically for Deer Park Circle, we're working very closely with their management structure. And what this does is it's also allows us to show enforcement action against their tenants, which they've already had a meeting this year with their tenants, letting them know if they have frequent police contacts and violations, that they will be evicted from their apartment complex. Or the eviction process will be sought by the management company. So we'll be working with the management company at Deer Park Circle to let them know of violations that are occurring in their apartment.
I do think that the excessiveness of that warrants a fine, because they're utilizing our resources.
Oh, definitely.
Day after day after day after day. Resources that could be used keeping our community safe, not just worried about sound. So they are impeding on our ability to do your job as the police department. So I think there's got to be a balance there. So I just worry voting for this, that we're going to turn on all of the revenge neighbors that are just mad at another neighbor. So I want to make sure we're careful about that.
One thing I just want to be clear about is the calls, they're going to probably still call. The revenge neighbor is going to call regardless if we have an ordinance or not. What this allows is if, if we go out there and we believe it's reasonable, it's kids playing, we can say, no problem, kids are playing. But if it's not the kids playing, it's the 200-person party, 200-person party in the backyard at 11 o'clock, and we're getting calls from all the neighbors, we can actually enforce and provide a citation because we find that unreasonable. The unreasonableness will always be in the discretion of the officer. Just because someone calls doesn't equate to an automatic citation. They are not the complaint. They're the complaint, but we're going to be the ones issuing the citation at them, if there was one issued.
During normal hours from 8:00 AM to?
10:00 PM.
800 to 2200.
Help them memorize all this now. There is, is there any footage then?
150 feet.
I think we should model it more after like Roselle, where there is no, there's no rule between certain hours. Because if somebody is just in their backyard, once a year, they have a Fourth of July party, and the neighbor next door says, no, I don't think so. It's 9:00, and, you know, my cat's sleeping. You know, I think that's just not plausible, when technically.
So currently, we residents have to get amplifier permits.
You can get an amplifier permit that goes to 11:00, I think.
Yeah. So for that situation you're talking about, if someone's going to have extremely loud music, they can request an amplifier permit through the village. So the only way to do what you're saying, trustee Hopkins, is they would have to eliminate the process of.
I think it's like 15 bucks or something. And I'm glad this didn't go back a couple years, because I was actually on this list at one point.
No.
I had an engagement party in my backyard with some music and.
75 feet seem a little bit too far away for midnight or 1:00 or 2:00 excess noise?
No, I.
Yeah, I mean.
Based on the research.
In the morning, not in the afternoon.
Yeah. So based on the 75-foot rule, that would be, you know, the overnight hours, between 10:00 at night until 8:00 in the morning.
I mean, I'm noticing that most of the other surrounding towns are at 50 for that.
So where we started with the ordinance that's actually written, we're more restrictive than seven of the eight communities. So I know you've revised it a little bit, and we've loosened it. But the first go-around, we were more restrictive than seven of the eight. That's during normal daytime hours. That's, that was shocking to me. So I definitely think that modeling it after like Roselle would be, would be a good start, I think.
So why can't we just have like, those are the quiet hours, because if people are still going to call anyways, right? Because people aren't going to memorize whatever ordinance is. If they feel like it's too loud, they're going to call, and you have to go out, right?
Well, the thing is, we have to have a measurable violation. I mean, you say quiet hours, but how do I determine if they're quiet or not? That's why we're giving it a feet or 50 feet or 75 feet. Again, if we don't amend the ordinance, the 50 feet is still in our current ordinance. So they would still be, as of right now today, the incidents that trustee Hopkins is talking about, they're all in violation. They don't have amplifier permits. We just don't have an ability to enforce it. So I think the direction we're going is obviously more lenient, but also responsible to all the residents of town, because we do get quite a few complaints about the excessive noise. I know you guys are worried about the targeting of residents, but we do get legitimate complaints also in this, many legitimate complaints, and this allows us enforcement for the people that don't abate. I want to keep reiterating that. We will always give people the ability to abate the noise and fix the noise. There will never be a sneak attack, here's your ticket, good night.
But I think that's where, that's where I think you hit a point there. Should they have to abate the noise? I mean, there is a reasonable expectation for someone to have a party and to have music that's loud before 11:00 at night or 10:00 at night. And if it's just once or twice a year, I mean, that should be okay. But technically, you're saying someone could be cited.
But I think, Adam, that's, or trustee Hopkins, that's where you get an amplifier permit. If you know you're having that party, you get the amplifier permit and you're covered. You're covered. And frankly, you know, if I've got a brand-new baby and these guys are having a party every third Tuesday or something, that's an issue. So I think that's the reason why we have the amplifier permit. There is permissions to do that party. The way that I feel, I'm trusting the police department to know what they're enforcing and how they'll be enforcing it going forward.
Here's another point. If you look at the list of all the calls from November throughout the year, you can see just by, you know, Noel Crest Drive, three in a row, well, if the police had the power to submit a violation, that three might have been reduced to two or one. So, you know, some of these, some of them were, it's just a single home address. They were probably notified, warned, and they turned the music down. But when you see three, four, or five of these in a row on the same day, within a couple-hour time period, they kind of just, kind of turned their finger up at everybody.
But I think that's where they, they make the point. It's between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. It's not at 9:00.
I do have a side question, because this actually happened in my event. I actually got an amplifier permit, and then, but they still came out. So I don't know if the amplifier permit only goes up to a certain level of volume or.
Sure you didn't go past the midnight mark?
They just came out to make contact with you. They may, I mean, a lot of times that'll just be a courtesy, because we'll go out there, because we'll have to talk to the complainant, telling the person, hey, they have an amplifier permit, and then we'll just notify you guys.
Turn it down a little bit.
Well, no, not even turn it down, because you're allowed a reasonable amount of volume. Now, again, you may, you know, take into account what your neighbors are saying and want to turn it down.
You just invite all the neighbors.
They're supposed to invite everybody, yeah.
Invite all the neighbors, and then you're fine.
So what's the hurt in actually specifying the language like Roselle does? Because then that gives you the authority as a police officer to make your own judgment and not restrict it to a said footage.
Would you mind giving me the Roselle language? Do you have that?
Amplified sound between the hours of 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM that is plainly audible at 50 feet from the property line is prohibited. And during the hours, any amplified sound that disturbs the peace, quiet, and comfort of neighboring inhabitants.
Thank you.
So that gives you the discretion to, you know, do what you think is right.
But trustee, that's 50 feet. So that's what we.
During the hours of 11:00 PM.
11:00 to 7:00 AM, yeah.
Any other time, it's up to your discretion.
I agree with that. It just, the, we have the, our current code has a amplifier permit.
Yeah, we'll strike that. We'll strike that, and this will be, I mean, I want more authority in the people that actually make the decisions and goes out there and says, okay, they're not being reasonable. They're being reasonable. Because if it says 150 feet, and there's a neighbor at 150 feet, and he's got a tape measure out, and he's like, I hear that. I want him to get cited. And you're like, you know, I understand what you're saying, but you can barely hear it. But this neighbor's saying, no, I can hear it. Now you've got a big argument. So I think if you guys have that, you know, that leeway, I mean, I think that.
Are you advocating for 11:00 PM as well instead of 10:00?
I'm advocating for, for the least restrictive, which is the Roselle ordinance.
I wanted to ask chief, have you guys considered Friday and Saturday being a later time in your proposal, or when you were putting this together? And also holiday like Fourth of July, having it kind of like mute?
Our current ordinance, are you asking me or chief?
Yeah, either. Sorry.
Our current ordinance does state Monday through Saturday is 11:00 PM, and Monday, or sorry, Sunday is more restrictive. The reason we were including 10:00 in our proposal is that of our noise complaints that we responded to, 50% occurred after 11:00 PM, and then 23% occurred in that one hour between 10:00 and 11:00 PM. So by adding that time, we addressed 20, basically 25% of the complaints that we had taken. That's why.
I make a suggestion to the board. Let's trust what they are doing and trust what they're going to do, and revisit it in six months. And if we have more complaints or less complaints, or if somebody's arguing about it, then we will go back and revisit this. But I trust that they understand what they're trying to enforce, and we'll do a better job of what we have now. That's my suggestion.
I think leaving it up to just your discretion then opens it up to people saying that, well, you're favoring, the police is favoring this person over this person.
It's subjective, then.
Right.
You got to put some type of determination in it.
I'll vote no on it. If it's not, if it's more restrictive than these other communities that the list that you sent us, I would definitely have to vote no. I don't want to be restrictive on a residence like this. And to your point, yes, the amplifier permit is a great method. But I've gotten ready for parties a week away, and the last thing on my mind is coming down to village hall or going online and getting an amplifier permit, which I guarantee you, 95% of our residents don't even know about.
It took me five, it took me five minutes to do it.
Can you fill it out online?
Yeah.
You don't even have to come to the village hall.
No.
I agree that I don't want to restrict residents, but I also want to make sure that our police department has some teeth. And if they don't do something, they'd have no teeth.
They have teeth with the Roselle ordinance. That.
I agree that most people don't know about the amplifier permit or just going to have a party.
Right. A lot of people don't.
Who's going to think about that?
They're just take the $75 ticket, pay, and be like, okay.
Right. At least some have to get a permit.
You guys want to take some of the feedback, tweak it a little bit, and we'll do one more committee on this, and we can have something that we can read and residents can read.
It's a good idea. Does this have to go in front of the Plan Commission? Or is this? No.
No.
I just want to add something that trustee Gunstein mentioned. So currently in the amplifier permit, you know, there is exceptions to parades, like bands and parade, stuff like that. We also talked in our discussion today, there are other towns, for instance, like St. Charles, that have it built in. Parades, fireworks, cultural events, activities, special events, and other activities authorized by the city council would not need a amplifier permit.
I think the, to trustee Hopkins' point and to mayor Wallace's point, you know, you guys are the, you guys are the people that are out of their ground seeing this. My personal opinion is Monday through Friday from 7:00 AM to, you know, 10:00 PM or 11:00 PM, if I got construction crews working, I don't think there should be any violation. After 10:00 PM or 11:00 PM, depending on the time, I think there should be some enforcement. Because I think some people will push the limits. I totally agree. They're going to push the limits. So I want to see some teeth in it. I just, you know, I think it's, to president Wallace's point.
To answer that question, in regard to the excessive noise ordinance, it does specify when lawn care maintenance and equipment being used for construction could be used. So that would not be a part of the amplifier permit.
And you're changing it from 50 feet to 150 feet, correct?
That's only for.
The day.
So there's different components, right? So the amplifier permit deals only with amplified devices. But what I've heard today is some people mentioning some other examples, such as construction. Construction is specifically dictated, just like lawn care equipment, in excessive noise, which states equipment being used for construction between the hours of 7:00 AM and 9:00 PM on Monday through Fridays inclusive, and between the hours of 8:00 AM and 9:00 PM on Saturdays and Sundays. So it all depends what type of noise we're talking about. Like, there was also another example of like, you know, people being loud, let's say, outside at their pool. That would be fall under the excessive noise. It doesn't have to do with the amplifier. The amplifier, literally, we would just look to have some type of distance. And we really felt that Elgin's, what they proposed from talking today, would give us the most leniency, especially for the examples we were provided. Let's say people were gardening, you know, would they be ticketed? I think 150 feet beyond that is pretty reasonable. And even with that, if we get a complaint, we kind of know what we're dealing with. And it kind of takes out some of the discretion as well, as trustee Swansky said, is, you know, otherwise you're going to have people just, why did this person, you know, told to turn it down, and this person did? And why did this person? I just think it's much more clearer based on what other towns do, and in fairness of what reasonable is, is just setting a distance during certain daytime hours compared to nighttime hours, especially with the whole reason why we have an amplifier permit as well.
Okay, let me throw something at you guys. Majority of the calls are coming from Deer Park Circle. That's an apartment complex where the walls may be thinner. You could have an 80-year-old man that can barely hear, has his TV jacked up, and that's why you're called out there. How does the 50, 75, or 100-foot work when your neighbors are sharing bedroom walls, or they're sharing family room walls? Because that's a majority where your calls are coming from.
It would still be the same. So 150 feet inside an apartment building would obviously be excessive. So, yeah, it would be measured 150 feet or 75 feet from the point of where the noise is originating at.
And I do know from experience that most lease agreements have set hours in there, and after 11:00 PM, you're supposed to respect your neighbors and keep noise levels down. There's a lot of people that live in apartments that work third shift. And so they're coming
And again, we're working very closely with the management at Deer Park Circle and by us reporting violations to them, all of our noise ordinance, that gives them also the ability and legal authority to start eviction process and lease violations. And so that gives them more work with.
We looked at what other ordinances are. Did we talk to their villages on like how it's working or if they're having any issues?
You know, upon our research, we haven't, no one's really changed their ordinance for a very long time. The only one that's changed their ordinance most recently is Bloomingdale, and that literally had to do with some changes for like loud exhaust systems and then just some case decisions that came out for playing of vehicles where you're not just citing people for enjoying it for the people inside the car. But as I mentioned, you know, based on our research, I think these are just law enforcement and more importantly, municipal standards, that, you know, we're always gonna find occasion where we can find that one offset. We can find that for any type of ordinance that we create or we have for our town. But I could assure you that our police department, just like when we had the discussions for parking over the sidewalk, does a really nice job of trying to mitigate these things. You know, we're trying to look for compliance. We're not trying to look for ticketing. So I think we tried to take into a lot of different things that you have brought up, but we're always gonna find a situation that we can't spell out by ordinance nor can we find any town, not only in Illinois but other towns outside of Illinois that I've taken a look at, you know, that has a perfect solution for everything. But I think what we're asking is not only fair, but it's reasonable. And I think it would give our police department the authority to try to get people to abate the noise. And if not, we would have, you know, some type of resource for them to be penalized for doing so. I mean, we have to remember, whether we do something or not, or whether we make it two miles as your distance or one foot, we're still gonna get the complaints. And that's what you just need to trust our police department. That's what we do very well is to make sure that we mediate these complaints. And I think by doing this, it takes away a lot of the ambiguity that is right now in the ordinance that is causing a lot of people to have these questions. And I think it'll be more to find out if we put this stuff in the ordinance than based on what our current ordinances is, which is just very generic and very hard to decipher in regard to not only our officers but our residents and our trustees alike.
I think that to President Wallace's point, you guys do the job well, you've laid it out. We have to trust, you're, again, you're the ones on the ground. Maybe we should revisit this in six months after it's approved, get through the summer while we're out, you know, everybody's out partying in the summer, and revisit. Just look at the numbers and see if the numbers are down. We still haven't written citations because we're not here as a cash, it's not for cash grab, it's not for raising revenue, it's to control it. So...
I would just...
Personally, would like to see it at 11:00 PM, but that's just me for Friday and Saturday. I think it should be 11:00. That's just my personal opinion. But aside from that, I think it's less restrictive in a sense. And, you know, I think it's good to revisit it in six months.
Well, I would, I would like to give the police department the ability, you know, we brought this so that we could have the ability to do some enforcement during the summer when those complaints are at the highest.
Correct.
So I'd like to take another swipe, if you're okay, to bring it back to committee. What I'd like to know is, you know, I'm hearing that there's no disagreement on having a timeframe, you know, and there's some discussion between, you know, an hour. But I don't know where the majority of the board sits on in terms of distance.
Can I do a quick straw poll here? I would suggest that we let the police department bring something back to the board so it's ready for the summertime that they believe that they can enforce.
We can try it.
Is there a straw poll, okay with that?
Yes, we have to live with that.
Yes, did they just do that, though?
Yeah.
I'm not okay with that because I want our residents to actually see...
I didn't think you would be.
I want their residents to actually see our ordinance.
They'll see them in action.
They're gonna see it and it's gonna happen what they did to Maryville. We're gonna pass it and no one will be able to speak.
No.
That's what we want to do? I don't believe in that.
They could have spoke the last two committee meetings.
You could have put it on paper.
They could have spoke the last two committee meetings if they wanted to. They could have come in here and spoken town hall.
That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is if we bring this back to the board, if we bring this back to the board, it's gonna be for a vote, not to modify or change it.
I know.
That's the problem. It's not on paper.
You don't trust the police department, is what you're saying.
What?
Guys, listen, let's settle down.
Well, they're the ones that have to enforce it.
That is way out of line, Kevin. Why, I, that is, actually, I'm very offended by that.
Well, why wouldn't you trust the fact that they know what they want to pass? Why wouldn't you trust the fact that they know what they...
So are you telling me Hannover Park, Carroll Stream, Bloomingdale, Schaumburg, Roselle, and Elgin, they're, they don't care?
Everybody's different, aren't they? Everybody's different. Everybody's different.
Exactly. I just want to give our residents a little bit to look at before we vote on something.
You've had two times to look at it.
They just modified it right here and it's not even before us. I haven't even seen it on paper. And now you want to just vote on it.
All right.
That's what you want?
I want to...
I don't.
You do what you think is right. I think the rest of the board would like to have the police department actually be in charge of what they're gonna enforce.
I'm not saying yes or no to something I don't even see on paper yet.
I don't know what I'm doing.
I don't think anyone on this board could recite what Deputy Chief Sweeney said. Because we don't know. It's not on paper.
And there's no exact science to it. I think what we're trying to do is trying to figure out an exact science to this and there is not one.
All I want is our residents to be able to see it on paper before we vote on it and have a chance to talk and us to make modifications, and that happens in committee. So if you want to send something to the board, we're not gonna modify it.
Excuse, were we not, were we planning on modifying something? The way I heard it was we were, without your agreement, we were considering allowing the police department to go forward with this as it sits, as they presented it today, 150 feet and 75 feet in the evening hours, 150 feet during the day for amplified noise only. Is that correct?
I think, I think we probably have enough time before it's an enforcement crunch, Chief, to take what was presented today, bring it back to committee for your consideration before you move it to the board. And that way, we will have something on the books before the 4th of July.
The July 2nd meeting.
Yeah. I'll still say that I think that the police department is very equipped to be able to put together a noise ordinance that they think that they can enforce and that has teeth on it. So that's my opinion. And if some of the people on this board don't believe that, then that's their opinion.
Actually, that's not my point at all. My point was I want our residents to actually see the ordinance on paper before we vote on it. This has nothing to do with what I think of the government or their ability to do it. It's to give our residents an opportunity to see something.
We go again.
And you are accusing me of not liking our police department.
No, I'm not. No, I'm not.
And I really take offense to that.
I apologize if that's what you thought I said. That is absolutely not what I said.
You clearly said that.
I said, I will defend the police department's decision. That's what I said.
Well, I guess I have an opportunity to say something finally. Has everybody calmed down? You know, I want to make sure that everybody's taking their happy pills and whatnot. But I think that you absolutely have to have something, okay? I agree with, with Trustee Gunstein that I'd like to see 11:00 on weekends, okay? We've done that before. You know, we do it with the liquor licenses, we keep them later and whatnot on weekends and whatnot. And I also agree with the mayor that we've got to get something out there. And if the residents have to see it, you know, we can publish it on our website or whatever the case may be to let them know it's coming and have them have an opportunity to comment if they so choose. 30%, roughly 30% of your complaints came from, from, where do I see it? Bartlet Lake Apartments. That's incredible. And I'm looking at the addresses and, you know, as far as affecting the entire village, there were some of these people that did it repeatedly. I mean, it's not like it was widespread. There were, you know, it, well, it is, but there's a percentage of people, a large percentage of people were, occurred repeatedly. So I would like to see us do something, and the mayor had mentioned it earlier, and then, you know, put it in effect so we have something that, you know, you can enforce and give you something that you can depend on, something that you can rely on. And then we can reevaluate it after the summer months. I think you've said something to the effect like six months. Isn't that correct, Kevin?
Yeah, let's take a look at it and...
Let's get something in your hands that you can work with, publish it, you know, in, on our webpage.
Prior to the 4th of July.
Oh, it has to be before the 4th of July. I was hoping, well...
Well, we'll review it to committee next meeting and approve it at the first meeting in July.
Yeah.
Right?
And we'll get it on the website.
Trusty Hopkins?
Yes.
And again, I apologize, I did not mean to insinuate that you don't trust our police department. I just want to be on record of that.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
To put things in perspective, it's less than one call a day for a community of 40,000 people and however many household that is. It's, to me, it doesn't seem like it's too aggravating.
Especially for people that like to party like people in Bartlet.
Yeah.
I just think...
Come to my house.